Item number three, discussion and possible approval of minutes for route seven twenty-five meeting.
I make a motion to approve second.
Yes.
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 Okay, item number three, discussion and possible action on reports from the emergency management director, Grady County Fire Department, safety director, and construction superintendent.
We have our LEPC meeting for this Thursday at eleven thirty at the tech center. That's our quarterly meeting. Our scheduled presenters is a couple of the guardsmen from the sixty-third civil support team will be out to, supposed to give us the presentation. They, I haven't had a chance to get them to call me back to verify everything, but we've had this in plan for a couple of months. But that's at eleven thirty, thirty. Our community public education outreach was supposed to be this Saturday at Gorilla Tool. I don't think the weather's gonna be favorable for us, because we do have a good chance of rain starting later this week, and we could get to one or two inches, so we may have to postpone that. We'll keep an eye on the weather, much need to rain coming in, so.
I have updated slash revised agendas we added to the executive session to update from our faculty. That wasn't on the original, everything else is the same. Did have REC banquet Thursday night. We had six or seven stations that are in REC area, and they received a seven hundred fifty dollar grant for each station from REC. And then our Naples Community Appreciation Dinner was yesterday. I left about one, but it was a full house, and I think they did very well. More meeting tomorrow? I think that's all I have.
Well, last week I had an opportunity to join the district three tree crew, and they were trimming down trees. They demonstrated excellent safety practices while also back trimming those trees and making our roads safer. So they did a great job out there. Did get with a couple of their foremans and asked for some projects that they were doing, just to, usually during the summer I'll go out and do some quick scans, safety scans with them. We did put the two eighty boxes, they're installed. Mike and Ricky helped me on that second one, because there was a pretty sensitive area there, so we got those installed already. And as Dell said, I will be at the LPC meeting also this Thursday, so that's all I have for you guys.
I had Bobby check on some signs. I talked to the sheriff, we'd had some issues, you know, with some threats on Facebook, and we wondered about just changing the signs to say preserved instead of District One Commissioner, County Clerk, Assessor. So I had Bobby check on that. They're like thirty-five dollars a sign.
Yeah, so if we get ten of that.
That was kind of just brought up last week, and I talked to Gary, it was Thursday.
Yeah, we've had some threats on Facebook. My investigators tracked one of the threats. He's out of Tulsa, he has nothing, no affiliation down here, he's just one of these guys that gets on there and makes just idle threats. Contacted Tulsa County Sheriff's Office, they were supposed to go out, try to make contact with him, and advise him what felony he's committing by doing this, so hopefully he understands. But still, down south, they're pretty hacked off about their taxes, which everybody understands that, but they're going at the wrong people, maybe threat to the assessor. But I agree with Ruth, we don't need to put y'all's names out there, who's parked where. I mean, and like I said, moving her parking place up, I will have deputies out there in the morning times when the elected officials aren't coming in, just to make sure they get in the office okay, so.
If that's good with you guys, we can change the signs. We'd all just park in the same place, we want to move Cindy up, we'd all just park in the same place, and just have, just take those designated signs down that say our names. We need to get with Vicki, because she said she had a few signs too.
We're gonna start with a little OSU extension project, making their bathroom into a utility room this week. And then I got calls in to PSO for your electrical stuff. That guy's kind of hard to get hold of, but as soon as he lets me know when they can start, I'll coordinate with Doug on the trench, and get ASG lined up so everybody falls in there, and you don't have time where your building's drought covered, but probably in the next couple of weeks. As soon as I hear from PSO, I'll let everybody know.
Is it it? Thank you. Okay, item number five, public comments, comments from the table. It was limited to two minutes, time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Mr. Wyatt Griffith?
Excuse my penmanship, sir, Matt Griffith.
Ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you for the time. I appeared here today as an attorney on behalf of the owner of both sides of the property, referenced in item seventeen, county road thirteen thirty, and the idea that that is, that section line will be opened by the commission. We certainly understand the commission's right to do that, the county's right to do that. Our concern in that, in that respect is to make sure that all of the statutory requirements are followed, and that we make sure that we address really three or four main issues. One is the quality of the road that's going in there. We understand the commission's not, and the county's not interested in maintaining that road. We're concerned about the maintenance of the road, because we own the land on both sides. We want to make sure that nothing with respect to the construction of the road affects our client's land on either side, and that the maintenance is clear as to the petitioner's responsibility for the maintenance of the road, and also making sure that our client has no liability with respect to traffic traveling up and down that, because of course, once it's open, it becomes a public highway by statute, so anybody can go up and down through there. So we would just encourage, respectfully encourage the commissioners to, to be aware of those issues, and that if the, if the thought was just that there was going to be an opening, and that everything else was going to go to the, go to the petitioner, Mr. Brown, the neighbor to the, to the west, it's not quite that simple. We want to make sure that, that all of the statutory requirements are followed in terms of the notice and the survey, and the constructibility of the road, and all that goes along with that. And so we would appreciate being kept up to, up to date on the status of that, and to, and to make sure that that's going forward accordingly. My client, Mr. Hicks, is here also, and I believe he's next on the list, so I'll reserve the rest of my time for, for him. Thank you all very much.
Hello, my name's Nick Hicks, I just wanted to, I don't necessarily have an issue with the access, what I do have an issue with is the ongoing maintenance. I do construction for a living. The reason the county doesn't want to put in a road there is because it's three or four hundred thousand dollars to put in a road, and then the ongoing maintenance of it. I have concerns about the constructibility aspect of it. If you track out that county line, it runs half and half, straddles an existing washout, and then also crosses some creek areas that, you know, you can't get a four to one slope at all. Like, it's just, it's not possible, you're not going to be able to work that road and put it in without causing further issues after that. You really need, you know, a hundred foot wide swath down through there to get done, which is what you need to do. I've got concerns about soil stabilization, you know, putting saw back on, you know, where it's going to be bare dirt, and things like that. I don't think that they have a concept of what it's going to cost to actually put that road in. I think they think that it's going to be, you know, twenty or thirty thousand dollars, throw some gravel down, and move on, and it's not that simple, because of the topography and everything that goes along with it. So that's pretty much my concern. Any questions from you guys at all?
Yeah, we'll talk about more on seventeen.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, item number six, new business. In order to put up a meeting act title twenty-five, it's on statute three eleven A nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about, or which could not have been reasoned or seen prior to the time the posting did seem to.
I have some new business. On the legal use for the county policy, I think it's poorly written. Number one, it's stated in there, the Oklahoma State Constitution, which is two hundred and twenty-one pages. I'm sure none of our employees are going to go read two hundred and twenty-one pages to look at that. We need to specify in this policy where this is at.
And that, the county use, that is, I found out after I talked to you, that is more of a county use policy. That is the county that, it's not a state, well, there is a state statute about.
Yes, there is.
Vehicles, but that, ours is more county use.
Yes.
Yeah.
But also when you get into the constitution, like I said, and I know where it's at in the constitution, because I read the constitution. Also stated in there is the federal new service code, no places at state, because there's thirty-five pages to the new code. So I have a copy of it, and I read it. You know, we got in a discussion, you and I did, about my employees, and that you've heard complaints about them taking their kids to schools, and driving their vehicles to church and stuff. Well, these two commissioners never heard of us in complaints. If a complaint comes in on my office, it needs to be addressed with me. Nobody else, with me. Mike, right now, as per my attorney for my office, we're not signing the county policy. I think it needs to be rewrote. And when you get into my policies, because I have a different policy than all the rest of y'all under federal law, okay? Educational level, my deputies, they have to go through hundreds of hours of driving. They're highly trained, they're driving, that's all they do, all day long, is drive. For somebody to tell me that my people can't have, I'm the one that makes that call in my office. If I won't allow them to drive and have people in their car, that's up to me, it's not to nobody else. My attorney, like I said, he'll be here next week, and we'll discuss this more. Well, like I said, complaints, we have a release of liability form anytime somebody gets in my cars that they sign, including family members. So it cuts out the liability for the county. If you don't think I don't look after the county, I promise you guys, I'm the one that looks under state federal laws, I'm the one that reads all of this stuff, okay? I, I read just like these attorneys do. I understand what this says, okay? Whenever we're putting stuff in policies, and we're not letting our employees know where it's at in policies, or in the constitution, or in, that's on us. We're not doing our job as leaders to let our people know where to go look at this. Because I promise you, there's some of our employees that here goes, they're just making stuff up. Let's give them references to go look at it. I mean, if they want to read this, we're kind of to them. It, I'm telling you, it's kind of like legal stuff, it's boring, so I'll get out. So, but again, I think we need to look at that, I think we need to readdress that, if it was up to me, that's what I would. If there's any questions from my office, if any of y'all have any questions, come to me, all right, please?
I think you're right, we do need to readdress that. We sent all that to ACCO, and ACCO looked that over, but after you and I got to talking, I talked to Ricky Branch in the state auditor's office, and he said, "That's a county policy." But he also said that your policy has to be approved by the commissioners, and so I think that we need to bring a new handbook, we need to fix your policy. He said it's best to have one policy, like to integrate your policy into ours, because if not, the assessor can come in and ask for her own policy, the treasurer can come in and ask for her own policy.
You have to understand in the federal law, you deal with federal law, so law enforcement is totally different than any other entity. So you want to try to implement my policy, and yes, my policy, once it's finished, it's on Lexapro, I will give you all, all three access to my policies. My policy is huge, it's over thirteen hundred pages long right now, and we're still not done with it. We still have about fifty or sixty more policies to put into ours, because of everything that we do. So, but no, once it's done, y'all will have a copy of it, okay? Like I said, but talk with my legal advisor that I have hired to my office, right now, we're not signing nothing.
And that's fine, my concern was, is that we have a large lawsuit. And we'd be, and it not just be Nittica, it'd be whole Grady County.
I understand.
So that was my concern.
I cover us as far as liability, anybody gets in my car, signs it'll release the liability, which is, we're covered under, under law, so. But I just want to add, we really need to look at that policy again, I know y'all approved it already, but it really needs to be brought back to the board.
I think it'd probably like our handbook, we need to probably look at our handbook at least once a year, and do any changes that we have.
Well, anytime you reference something, especially in the Oklahoma State Constitution, let's, let's see records where it's at, so people can go and look at that if they have questions. So, but again, that, that's where I'm at here on this. Again, like I said, if y'all ever have a question, call me, come to my office, I mean, we'll sit down and discuss it, all right? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Go have a great day.
You too.
Okay, item number seven, discussion and possible approval of a letter addressing the Grady County Fire Board, members on requirements for board members and tenants, and requirements for their meetings. Okay, Kim.
Yeah, I drafted that letter, I didn't realize, I mean, I didn't know if you guys wanted on Grady County fire letterhead, or on commissioner's letterhead, that was my main question on that. But that is just entirely up to you guys.
I think Charles, I'm sorry, I think Charles was still working on figuring out what we can and can't do. I know in Title nineteen and section seven, seven or something, it says neglected duty, and that said for any volunteer, it didn't just specifically say firefighter. But I also found some stuff on, in Title eleven, about city councils and stuff in times, so I sent all that to Charles. I don't know if he's still working on it.
The bylaws again are on the agenda for tomorrow, so they may address that then, I don't know. To address, to amend the bylaws. They haven't been amended since, I believe it's two thousand twelve, and I don't think, their board, their fire department, firefighter bylaws. The board didn't have a set of bylaws, my logic.
Yeah, that seven and seven fell under firefighters, but it said any volunteer, so that's kind of what Charles was looking at.
Anyway, that was, that was my bill on the letter, I didn't know if you guys wanted to put it on commissioner's letterhead, or fire department again.
I think, but nothing, either way, it may not matter to me.
I'll make motion to approve this.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes. I'll take that, and I'll get you a copy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, item eight, acknowledgement of a tort claim filed by Harry B. Junior. Item number, acknowledged, item number nine, acknowledgement of a tort claim filed by Ruth Golden. It's going to be under knowledge. Okay, discussion. Discussion, possible approval of engine assistance request for Virgil Baz. I believe Virgil Baz is in my district. Information I have was, go ahead, Kim.
Mr. Baz, he was found at his home on Tully and I Street. He has a couple of issues that they want to get him cremated as soon as possible, health concerns. And he's right now at a funeral home.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth. Yes.
Okay, item eleven, discussion, possible approval of an engine assistance request for Ronnie DeDallin.
She is a resident of Grady County District Two. She is at, was at Lynn Haven Retirement, she's been there for years, and she passed away with no family.
Make motion to approve.
I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Okay, item number twelve, discussion, possible approval of updating the Grady County Shin policy to be effective July one, twenty twenty-five.
So they did it for four, six, or eight days, and it's up to us to choose how many days we're going to make our employees go.
I'm not selling the four times camp. I don't have anybody involved in this, so whatever y'all want to do. Between us two.
I sure hate to say that they only have to go once a week. Can we split the middle and do six? You still have the, as the official, you have the right to, if they're gone on vacation, or sick, or whatever, to say.
Well, I'm a compromising guy, so I guess we can compromise.
So we make a motion to accept the six days a week, or month.
Six days a week?
Yeah. We'd all be in shape, wouldn't we?
The six day?
Yeah.
You can just take that, Gary.
Huh?
You can just take this, if you're not. Ruth, you made motion?
Yeah.
So it's like.
Yeah, say it.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Item thirteen, discussion and possible approval of an engagement letter from Budgeting and Accounting Services, P L L C, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, Estimative Needs and Financial Statement.
Motion to accept.
Say it.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach. Yes.
Ruth. Yes.
Okay, item fourteen, discussion and possible approval to use a local closing company instead of Legacy Title and More for the property located at two twenty on Moz Avenue.
So I contacted Ms. Russell again, because I contacted Legacy, and they said they were not doing any title work on two twenty. She said they'd done title work for them before, and if we wanted to use them in October, we would rather use one locally, so I'd like to change that, I don't know if we would do Cochrane or Washitall Valley, just one of the two.
I'm buying that. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Okay, so I make a motion to use Cochrane, I guess?
I'll second it. Okay, item fifteen.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Item fifteen, discussion and possible approval of a bid request for the rebidding of three-eighths inch number two cover, three-eighths inch number two cover washed, one inch pressure run, one and a half inch pressure run, and two and a half pressure run cover materials for Grady County.
So I called down last week, we had trucks that were waiting a couple hours to get loaded, and I called down last week, and he said they were literally bucket by bucket, and they didn't know when they would get stocked up ahead, so we need to rebid that, that ain't going to work, so I make a motion to go out for bids.
Rock. I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Yes.
That's a difference, that's a difference.
No.
That's a difference.
Okay. Okay, item number sixteen, discussion and possible approval of a bid request for a twenty twenty-four Ford F five fifty super cab, four by four cab, and chassis for Grady County District Two.
Make a motion to approve, there were a couple things that weren't on the state bid that we wanted on the vehicle, so we want to send it out for bid.
Say it, second.
Gary.
Yes.
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 Item seventeen, discussion and possible action to change the status of county road thirteen thirty from reserved to open from county street twenty-eight fifty going west for thirty-five hundred feet.
John, do you want to address this, or you want me to? So we are not building a road, we're just giving an easement to Mr. Brown. And we learned about this at ACCO the other day, Randy Robinson talked about this, and I have a decision from the Oklahoma Supreme Court here that was done in nineteen ninety-seven regarding this, so we're opening a section line road. We're not opening the road, we're not building a road where you're just giving an easement so Mr. Brown can get to his property. And there's the, Randy talked about it at the ACCO meeting last week.
May I comment? I'm very familiar with the Supreme Court case, and clearly authorizes your ability to, to open the section line, no question about that. The issue that's unclear from that case, and also from the statute, is what the ongoing, what the requirements are with respect to the road. That, that case also talks about constructibility, which I think is an issue here. Don't know whether it's constructible or not, won't know until the, until the survey's done, until the engineer goes out and reviews what the, what the road's going to look like, which you've already heard from Mr. Hicks about the constructibility of the road. Whether it's an issue or not, that's on Mr. Brown. Our position and perspective is, we just want to make sure it doesn't do anything to affect our land. The easement's already there, the county, it's a section line, they have six, they have a rod on each side, it's going to be a thirty-three foot road. I think there may have been a quest, an inquiry about our client building some fencing, or putting up some fencing that's there.
Yeah, Oklahoma's not open range, so if you'd like to have cattle, the cattle couldn't be on the section line, so you'd have to build a fence on the side to keep cattle off of the statue.
You're very right, we, we haven't been open, open range for a very long time. There's no cattle out there, I don't know if you've been there to see that or not, on, on either side. So we, we don't have any ongoing financial obligation with respect to any fencing, I just wanted to make that clear. And also encourage that we're clear about what the requirements are with respect to what he puts in out there, and making sure that our clients are indemnified, because as I said, it becomes a public highway. I know that it's just to service Mr. Brown's residence, but anybody can turn and go down there. Somebody, if that road's not constructed or maintained properly, and something happens, it's going to happen on the section line, which is where my client owns the land, and we want to make sure, since he's not doing. on the section line, which is where my client owns the land, and we want to make sure, since he's not doing this and he's not responsible for anything, that he's identified and secured against any liability.
You good?
Yeah.
Make a motion to, um, change it from reserved to open.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Yeah, Mike.
There you go. Thank you all.
Have a good day, sir.
Thank you. Okay, item eighteen, discussion and possible approval of a division order from Complimental Resources for property name, Griffwood Goddard Unit, property number one-one-four-zero-one-five. Any discussion, go ahead, you can. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Is this just on the? Just me, sign it?
Yes.
Just you or your own road? Done?
Yep. Approved as well.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, most to approve, who's second?
Ruth.
Okay. Okay, number item nineteen, uh, discussion, possible approval of a division order from Comino Natural Resources for property name Ralph Ellison, zero-seven-zero-seven-two-seven-dash-two-two-dash-fifteen-dash-one-W, owner number two-zero-seven-two-zero.
And these are the same ones that we approved the other day, the only difference is they have a different owner number, and that, the owner na- name is written out different than the other two. Um, and I, I was told by somebody that works in oil and gas, it's, you know, you get it. Put together, but the next, the nineteen and twenty, we've already approved those under a different owner number, it's just the owner number and the names were different on these, so I'll just make a motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I suppose I'll do this one, right, just me on this one. Okay, item number twenty, uh, discussion, possible approval of a division order for Comino Natural Resources for property name Greenleaf, zero-seven-zero-seven-two-seven-dash-thirty-four-dash-three-one-M-X-H, owner number two-zero-seven-two-zero. Motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth. Yes.
Okay, item twenty-one, discussion and possible approval of depositing a check from Next Era Energy in the amount of three thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars into District One Highway Immunity Account.
This was for, uh, the road damage that they did, that we billed them for. Um, I may have forgotten the check, I don't know if I, I don't know if I wrote it down here last week or this week.
Please don't have a grudge with the check.
My, uh, office manager's on vacation right now, so it's probably in the safe, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Yes.
Twenty-two, discussion, possible approval of utility pipeline, road crossing permits, water line, fast line permits, and driveway in-home permits. Motion to approve. We didn't get any, Kim? Kim?
Yes.
We ju- we don't have any.
No.
Most to approve.
You say. I have this.
Oh, okay. Item twenty-three, uh, discussion, possible approval of blanket purchase orders. I can move to approve.
Okay.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Okay, number twenty-four. Revenue purchase orders generated by the Grady County Government bodies during current and previous months and authorized or denied payment of such purchase.
Okay, um. Sheriff's Office, Harvest Bank, travel expenses, it's a partial payment, so we're paying nine hundred and eighty-six sixty, looks like it might be sixty-one, Jill, I want to look at this one, okay? Um, so we're doing a partial payment to Harvest for travel. Highway District One, um, pressure run, we exceeded the PO by, it looks like ninety dollars and thirty-one cents. Assessor Apprentice Information System, it's the final payment of ten thousand in their software, so we're making a partial payment. Highway District One, I'm not sure, I don't know how to say this, Trent?
Trinitas.
Trinitas, partial payment, uh, we're paying one thousand one hundred twenty-nine seventy-six. Title Senior Citizens, issued to Title Senior Citizens, it's their estimated November payroll, purchasing procedures were not followed. November invoices dated before PO, December invoices also on this PO because one was never opened for December. And it is, the amount is twenty-five thousand two hundred fourteen fifty-four. Um, sheriff to the Grady County Emergency Management Agency, blanket PO exceeded additional people, it's, uh, one dollar and thirty-one cents. Highway District Three, ACO dues, registration was, registration was made on March fourth, but the requisition was not turned in until March fifth. Public Health, Amazon, items purchased not listed on the PO, one thousand two hundred fifty-five forty. Sheriff's Department, proper pers- purchasing procedures were not followed, PO not opened before repair to Ja- Jeffrey Radford, twenty-six nineteen. I just want to reiterate that at ACO, when Cindy Bird spoke, she said that everything must be encumbered prior to purchasing, and that's what we've got to get people to understand. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Item twenty-five.
Can I say something about that for a second?
Yes.
Um, I made a comment to the auditors, because you know the auditors are here, and I made a comment to the auditors that, uh, we are doing so much better on our POs, um, being wrong, and he was super happy about that, having the purchasing class, too. And, uh, so I said, we're, we're just about five or six that are wrong a week now. He was completely shocked that we had five to six a week. And I thought that was strange, because I thought we were doing so much better.
Yeah.
But he was like, you have five or six wrong a week? Just to say, I guess we need to be doing better.
Well, I told my girls in our office that I would rather them encumber too much money than exceed a PO, I know it's still hard to do that, um, but no matter what we're buying, registration, hotels, whatever, they have to be encumbered prior to purchase, because if they're not, and you don't have the money appropriated, appropriated in your account, you're breaking the law. You cannot, you cannot spend more than you have in appropriations. So unless you encumber, you don't, you're not watching those reports, but, um, Cindy Bird talked about it again. I just think we need to do a better job at, at making sure people understand that. I think at some point, we're gonna have to say, you, you didn't do it properly, you're, we're gonna have to figure out another way to pay for it or something. But they're, they're having a lot of issues with the Title Senior Citizens right now. On POs not being opened.
Okay, item twenty-six, discussion, possible approval of estimate of needs, request for appropriations and transfer appropriations. Make most to approve.
I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Yes.
I think he skipped a little report, Gary, that we don't have.
I did?
Yeah, that we don't have. I don't know where this passed one, I don't remember exactly. I thought we were.
Yeah, I, I was wondering about that.
Did I contact you?
Huh?
I think it was a mistake. But, I, he never contacted me, he was coming this week, so I thought that that's what he said, but I will email him and say, maybe he, but it was next week.
All right, uh, item twenty-seven is discussion and possible action on the offer for lease of the auction to the highest bidder, three oil and gas mining leases, with each oil and gas lease having a term of three years with a three-sixteenth royalty upon the described premise, and no one here reaction on it. Okay. We done?
I'm done.
Ruth?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thanks, Tom.